I'm showing nine o'clock if you will and enable would you be so kind to stand for the invocation and then remain standing for the pledge of the flag.
Dear Lord, we wait this morning to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibilities to the past and to the future. We ask for your blessings. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call order the regular public meeting Henry County Board of Commissioners, nine o'clock a.m. Tuesday, June the 3rd, 2014, if somebody would move to approve the agenda as published or any amendments.
So move.
Have a motion from District 3 to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
Have a second from District 1. Any further discussion? All in favor, show but lifting of your right hand. All opposed, no. Correction, all opposed, same sign. Proclamations. At this time here, we're going to recognize three Special Olympic Champions and we're going to honor them and we're going to take a picture and we're just going to make this your day.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. This morning, we have a proclamation in recognition of the Henry County Special Athletes selected for the 2014 National Special Olympics, which is a huge honor. Whereas the Special Olympics National Games are held every year to showcase the best and most talented special athletes from across the country, representing each of the 50 states. And whereas this year's Special Olympics National Games is expected to draw large crowds, including approximately 3,000 athletes, 1,000 coaches, 8,000 volunteers, and nearly 15,000 family and friends. And whereas out of 12 Georgia athletes chosen to compete, three are from Henry County, selected as members of Team Georgia for the 2014 National Games to be held June 14th through 21st, 2014, in Princeton, New Jersey. And whereas those athletes are Melissa Dodgen for Bachi, Tarseeah Keys and her event partner Devina Ford for Bowling, and Brittany Hegelthorn and her event partner Mandy Connor for Tennis. And whereas the Henry County Parks and Recreation Department has been involved with Special Olympics for more than 20 years, encouraging and guiding the athletes in their goals and preparations. And whereas because of the hard work and diligent training and commitment on behalf of these athletes and their unified partners, they are afforded this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to proudly represent not only Henry County but the state of Georgia. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that we recognize these outstanding athletes and their unified partners and congratulate them on being selected to compete in the 2014 National Special Olympics and we wish them much success in all of their future endeavors. This third day of June 2014, signed by Tommy Anne Smith, Chairman, attested by Shay Mathis, County Clerk.
Thank you. Can we have the three applicants?
Do we have them here?
Come forward and anybody that's associating with them, I'd like for y'all to be on the picture too, please. Next, we have presentation of an award by the Henry County Soil and Water Conservation District for outstanding work in the area of soil erosion and water quality for Henry County, Mr. David Almond. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Chairman Dave Almond, Chairman of the Henry County Soil and Water Conservation District. With me this morning are three of my fellow supervisors, Mr. Bo Simpson, Mr. Butch Oliver, and Mr. Ron Turpin. I appreciate the opportunity to visit briefly with you this morning and to present an award to one of your employees. The mission of the Henry County Soil and Water Conservation District is to promote the wise use and management of our soil, water, plant, and animal resources, which are key cornerstones to the county's economic growth and the health and mental well-being of our citizens. We focus on a partnership approach with the county, cities, Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission, Natural Resource Conservation Service, and an array of other organizations to accomplish our mission. We are very pleased that the county is one of our key partners. The nature of our partnership activities are spelled out in a formal memorandum of agreement signed several years ago. As a result of that agreement and the passage of a county erosion and sediment control ordinance, Henry County was certified as a local issuing authority thereby giving the county authority to review and approve land disturbance permits. Today, we have an efficient and smoothly operating process and wish to thank you and your involved employees in this regard. This morning, we wish to recognize one of your employees for his dedication, diligence, and professionalism in working to ensure that the county's responsibilities and duties under the terms of the memorandum of agreement are met. He meets with us in our monthly meetings to report on activities and works in a timely and effective manner to resolve issues of concern. Thanks in no small part to his efforts, the county is doing an effective job in helping to ensure land disturbance permits or land disturbance activities safeguard soil and associated plant and animal resources, as well as protect and enhance water quality. It is an honor for me to be with you this morning, but it is an even higher honor for me to present our certificate of appreciation to one of your employees, Mr. George Patterson, Director of Environmental Compliance and Plan Review. Would Mr. Patterson please step forward? Lord, this is for your demonstrated leadership, creativity, and dedication that results in safeguarding soil, water quality, and associated natural resources within Henry County. Thank you.
Next, we have request for waivers of penalties and interest, Mr. Zahil Maknonia, 4475 Walk Stevens Road, and that would be Exhibit 1 in your book. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Sir, Chairman, and the members of the Board of Commissioners. I am Nurali Jalal. I am representing Zahir Maknonia. He's my son-in-law. He couldn't make today. This store has been open since 9/11. It's about 13 years, and he has never been late in the payment of the property taxes or any taxes. But due to housing slump and some of those jobs being moved due to housing slump, he has been striving hard to get breakeven in the business. He has rented, he has already leased the store to somebody to run the store, and he cannot breakeven in that. And last month, myself and Zahir, we met with Ms. Carolyn Morgan, and we worked with her, and she was very polite to give us some extension in payment of the monthly, some six months of payment scheduled for the property taxes. But I would humbly request the Board and the Chairman, if you could waive the penalty and interest on that. And I don't want to get Zahir or anybody of those partners to be diligent in any of those, the payment of the taxes. I would again appreciate your cooperation in that. And if need be, if you can, because I am helping him, he's my son-in-law, and if I can inject some help to him, and if you give some time, maybe in a month or two months, I'll pay off all the taxes due. If you could waive the penalty and interest, and I'll be very obliged to you, Sirs.
Anybody else have, anybody have any questions?
My first question is specifically to our new county manager. The last time we had something like this, an appeal on the agenda, we talked about not doing these in public, figuring out another way because it's kind of difficult for people to come up and air their personal business to the public. So I want to make that request that this is the last time that we do this in public. So you guys have been the owner of this store for 13 years?
Yes, Sir.
Okay. And you said you've never been late on any taxes or anything like that in the past?
No, Sir, except for these two for the year 2012 and '13.
Okay. This packet was sort of incomplete. So can you give me a synopsis of the financial arrangement you came to agreement on with the Tax Assessor's Office?
Yes, Sir. I'm going to lend money to him because he's my son-in-law, and I can give that money to him if you give me about a month.
I saw that you guys were going to be making installment payments.
Yes, Sir.
You made one payment, correct?
I made two payments. He has made two payments, Sir.
You made the payment in May.
Yeah, two payments of $3,058 each.
You have a payment in June.
Yes, Sir.
And will that, will that catch you up in terms of your back taxes?
Yes, Sir.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Property Zone Commercial?
Sorry?
Is it Property Zone Commercial?
Yes, Sir.
And it's that, it's the BP station off on the corner of Walk Stevens?
Yeah. No, this is the Shell Station.
The Shell Station.
Across from BP.
Got you. Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, I want to add to District comments on the whole point, because I know we're in a unique situation, is that we do have a new county manager. And we brought this forward. I just want to give the background is that it's unfortunate because it sounds like you've been a great resident, as well as a business owner in the community. And we all understand after 2008, a lot of things got behind. And to have to come before the public now, this is not ideal. And we had talked about it the last meeting, and it's never come before us on the agenda. So maybe after we get through going through your situation, and I would like to take a vote to where we give this back to the constitutional officer that has dealt with this stuff in the past, which was the Tax Commissioner. I think we'd be willing to probably take a vote on that so we could probably put an end to us having to deal with this on a monthly basis and have you guys come and do this. Because this is unfortunate, and I apologize to you that you're having to come before the county commissioners today to talk to us about this issue. That's all I want to say is that after, I mean, do you have direction that you?
I mean, I'm, you know, of the same thinking as you are. I wouldn't have a problem voting to send this back to the Tax Commissioner because I think that's where it belongs.
Do we, do we do that procedurally? Could we do this before we deal with this issue and let the Tax Commissioner take care of this so that this doesn't, we don't have to embarrass our taxpayers and citizens?
Put this request on hold. Make a motion to have the Tax Commissioner to delegate this responsibility to the Tax Commissioner and then send everyone down there to deal with, directly with that office. Yes, Sir, you can do that.
Okay. Are there any other comments? And then I'll make a motion if nobody has any comments.
You make a motion to what?
I wanted to make sure I gave, I didn't want to jump in front of anybody else who wanted to say anything.
Somebody else want to comment?
I make a motion that we change the decision-making process on these appeals and assign it back to, or delegate it back to the constitutional officer, the Tax Commissioner.
Have a motion?
He seconded.
Have a second, District 5. Any further discussion?
I have discussion.
Sit.
Back in '09, I guess it was, '09, '08, the Board transitioned from the Henry County Board of Commissioners here in these cases, from the Board, which the law says the Board has to do this, and for us to do it has to be at a public meeting. It doesn't have to be at a regular public meeting. It can be at a call public meeting on the schedule. Now, after they delegated the authority over to the Tax Commissioner, okay, if the Board hears it, it has to be in public session, and they have to deliberate in public session to make that determination. If the Tax Commissioner has it at the stroke of a pen with no hearing, that person has the authority delegated to waiver any and all of the penalties and interests, not the tax. Okay. When they went to that, the economy did go plummet. In '09, in like 10 months, the Tax Commissioner at the stroke of the pen, waived 6,148 tracts of land in nine months of penalties and the penalties and interest.
Yes, Sir.
That was, took $1,300,000 out of the till. Now, the point I'm making, I would vote against this because it's, there's no checking balance. They, there's no hearing. The public has, without making a Freedom of Information request, will never see those documents. You have to ask to see them. So having said that, I'm satisfied it's probably going to go five and one, but I'm going to vote no for this. Does anybody else have any comments for discussion?
No further comments? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, no. So move.
So should I understand, Senator, I have to go back to the Tax Commissioner or?
I would suggest that the Board table your case and the next one until such time that all the appropriate paperwork can be conducted and passed it down to the Tax Commissioner. This is assuming that the Tax Commissioner will take this. I mean, even though we delegate the authority, the Tax Commissioner has to take it, and I think that'd be discussion there, to see whether or not he would take it. And, but anyway, having said that, I think-
Mr. Chairman, I knew that we tabled it because the Tax Commissioner may very well say, "I don't want that job." So if we tabled this issue, I hate to have to bring the gentleman back, but I think it'd be in the best interest to do that. So my motion is tabled.
Now, is that going to be this one and the second one? We have the second one.
Well, we're getting, me to bring the second one up and then do the same thing, right?
Okay. We have a motion from District 4 to table this citizen's request. Have a second. I'm sorry. We don't have a second yet.
No, we, no.
Well, we have to have a second before we discuss. Second from District 3. Now, I yield the floor.
Well, since this gentleman is in my district and he's already discussed with us the issues behind his delinquency over the last couple of years, and they have been a business in good standing for, I think, 13 years in this community, in this community, and they've paid their taxes, I'm going to motion to waive penalties and interests.
We have a motion on the floor to waiver the interest and penalty.
We've got a motion to table it in a second. So if he has that feeling that that's inflation, then we could vote against.
You're correct. I will say that the motion's out of order. We have a pending motion in a second. Does anybody call a question? On the motion at hand? Okay. Somebody, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, a motion? Okay. Okay. The motion just died to table this issue. This is no longer on the table for table. Okay, now.
Did you hear this issue?
No.
No, Sir.
We already heard it. So I was, I wanted to make a motion.
That motion failed. So we're not, we're not tabling this. So now, I'm going to yield the floor to the distinguished gentleman from 5, and I think he's going to make a motion to waiver all this.
I want to make a motion that we waive the interest and penalties since they've been in business for a number of years in Henry County. They've been in good standings for a number of years. The economy was terrible over the past few years, and I just want to make sure that we don't have any more blight and that they're able to get back on their feet and serve our community.
We have a motion on the floor to have a second. Have a second, District 2. Any further discussion? Yes, sir. District 4.
All right. We've had a number of these come up. I do not know the gentleman. It has nothing to do with his issue, other than the fact, is this a legal reason, and I'm asking the attorney, is this a legal reason for this Board to waive the taxes? And I mean the interest and penalties.
The law states that there has to be reasonable cause in order to waive penalties and interest. The statute does not define what reasonable cause is. But I would say that just because you're in good standing as a business owner in the community would not rise to the level of reasonable cause. If you apply that loose standard, then everyone who is in good standing and has been in the community and in business for a number of years will come before you all asking for the same.
That's exactly what I was concerned with because we had one in my district, and the gentleman had a shopping center right there on 42 and has done work in all of the districts and was a pretty well-known quote-unquote developer that did mostly commercial and a little bit of residential. And, you know, I had to turn him down because we didn't have any legal reason to do it. And therein, therein is the issue as far as I'm concerned.
And I think the law, the lack of definition in the law, specific definition, can in itself be confusing. However, I think that you would need more. This Board has in the past looked at whether or not there was improper notice, whether it was sent to a wrong address. You all sort of have set some standards amongst yourselves as to how you will view that reasonable cause standard.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Sir.
How much is the total penalties and interest that we want to be waived? I don't see it.
$1,500.
How much?
You too?
Yes.
The only comment I'd like to make, that's why I asked if it was commercial. I think we, by considering commercial, unless the county erred, which in this part here, it appears the county didn't error, it's unfortunate that we went through the economy, we did, but all these other business people in Henry County went through the same thing. And I'm thinking that we are now setting a precedence that if this is, we have determined and redefined reasonable. And I don't even think the law itself gives a definition of reasonable. So it's whatever we make it reasonable. But residential might be one thing, but commercial, we, everybody's took a hit. And this becomes in my mind a new standard that if this right here represents reasonable cause to get it waived by the Board, then this becomes a new standard. And I think the commercial people, they do this for a living, will line up and, in this case here, will be lined up at the Tax Commissioner's office in case he will accept this. So having said that, that's my comments. Anybody else have any comments or discussion? District 2?
I think this is a case in point of why we need to send this back to the Tax Commissioner like we have, is because we are being a perfect example of why this is a hard decision. And we're having the exact same problems, it sounds like, that we were holding the Tax Commissioner to. So I'm glad that we've already voted, and after we get through this issue, we can get it down to the Tax Commissioner where it deserves to be because you can see how this gets very convoluted and very confusing very quickly. So I think we've taken the correct action by doing that vote.
Anybody else?
Chairman and I just like to say that this Board has made, set a precedence already, and I think we need to stick with that precedence that we've set in the past.
Any further comments? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand.
The motion died, I mean.
Yes, Sir.
Okay. Got you. All right.
Yes, Sir. Clerk, did you get the count? Okay, what was the count, please? How many was for the motion?
Repeat, repeat the motion.
Four opposed. Thank you so much.
The motion was to waive.
Okay. Now, if somebody wanted to postpone this, back to the original motion, it would take place. Otherwise, we'll hear it.
You talking about the same, is the Welch and Ashley Drive? Are you talking about this?
Yes, yes.
We're done with this gentleman, correct?
No.
Yes.
You denied it. He just voted to deny.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, Sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, Sir. Thank you. Next, we have Pastor Alexander, 108 Welp Street and 216 Ashley Drive, Exhibit 2. Is Pastor Alexander available? Or here, somebody representing him? If not, he has a request. He's not here. Does somebody move, approve or deny his request?
I make a motion that we table this. It has time to go to the Tax Commissioner to see if he makes-
We have a motion, District 2, to table this issue. Have a second from District 1. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no. So move. Let's move down to Public Safety Resolution Request and Authorization to Transfer Funds and Your Sorrow Budget Director. Good morning.
Good morning. You have, before you have a resolution to approve a budget amendment for the Police Department. We would like to transfer some funds from salary savings to repairs and maintenance and small equipment. The amount will be $28,726 from salaries to repairs and maintenance, $5,140, and small equipment for $23,586. They are needing to repair some body mics and in-car cameras, also to purchase some computers, cameras, and body armor.
Anybody have any comments, discussion? If not, does somebody move that we consider adopting a resolution that the Board of Commissioners authorized the Henry County Police Department to relocate funds from the regular employee accounts to various operating accounts? Have a motion, District 1. Have a second from District 3. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution request and authorization to accept a grant from the Criminal Justice Coordination Council, Major Keith Goins and Kimberly. Good morning.
Good morning, Sir. Morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. This resolution is to request participation in a match funding for the Violence Against Women Grant. This is a grant that we've participated in for the last four years. It's a 75%, 25% match grant, local. Back in 2010, to combat violence against women, the Henry County Police Department, along with prosecutors, judges, and victim advocates, have successfully collaborated to enhance the safety of women victims and violent crimes, to violent crimes, to increase officer education and accountability, and to address the special needs of this underserved, non-English-speaking victims of violent crimes. In 2014, due to the alarming rise in senior abuse nationally, we are also going to collaborate- The amount of federal dollars is $185,000, and the local match would be $61,666.
Anybody have any questions, comments for the major? If not, if somebody would consider a motion for a resolution of the Board to approve a resolution of the Board of Commissioners accepting a grant in the amount of $246,666 from the Criminal Justice Coordination Council. So move it. We have a motion, District One.
Second.
Second from District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
So move. Thank you, Major. Senior Services Resolution Requesting Approval of an Agreement to Purchase an Attendance and Reservation System, Ms. Diane Reed. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, and I'm here to seek approval of a purchase agreement for an attendance and reservation system that will work in conjunction with Henry County Transit. Eighty percent of the purchase price will be, fall under the FTA grant, will be paid by an FTA grant, and the Henry County Council on Aging has agreed to pay for the additional 20% of the purchase price.
Anybody have any questions, comments? If not, we have a resolution in the book requesting approval to purchase an attendance and reservation system, my senior center, to be used by the senior center and the transit department. Somebody move to approve this. We have a motion from District Four, second from District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Yes, sir.
Before she leaves the podium there. Diane, I visited the senior center at Heritage, and there seems to be some pretty good roof leaks. I haven't had a chance to talk with the county manager. I know that our, our maintenance department is aware of them, but I feel like we need to get somebody really moving quickly, because in that particular area, that type of roof system, we could end up with some significant mold and other issues that could cost a lot more money to fix than it would if we go ahead and get it done now. And I just noticed it the other day when I was in there, and we were also looking at condition of some of the flooring, and hoped that maybe we could take a hard look at maybe repairing and replacing some of the flooring, the seniors. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you've got certain funding, you just need some help on the flooring, is that correct?
We're looking at a couple of different options. Our Council on Aging had agreed to cost share, the cost of replacing some of the flooring. In addition, we're looking at perhaps utilizing some CDBG funds that might be available in the next couple of years to do that as well. So there are a couple of options for that.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to make everyone aware that we do have some issues, especially in that roof. And then I already, I know that Mike Keeble has talked with our county manager, but I think we need to move very quickly in that particular area, just because of situations that could arise with mold and other infestations. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, Transit. We have a resolution requesting authorization to purchase two transit buses. Ms. Debbie Krebtry, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board. I'm here requesting authorization to purchase two new buses as replacements for buses that have met the mileage and the year with the FTA 5307 grant as the 80-20 cost share. That amount, that 20% is in our budget, and these will replace one vehicle that was in a wreck last year and was surplus, and then the second vehicle has met its mileage and its years of service.
Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, would somebody consider the resolution in the book authorizing the purchase of two Goshen buses? So move. We have a motion, District Four. Second from District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, lifting your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution requesting approval of the 2014 revised supplemental capital contract with GDOT. Yes, ma'am.
This is, this is our GDOT grant that we get every year. They also replace buses at a 90-10 match, and every year, they just usually guess on what the cost is for the buses until the buses are actually purchased. This year, for the first time, the buses cost just a tad bit more than what they had estimated in the contracts, so that's what this is for.
We're going to enter into another contract, an amended contract from 123-564 to 132-564.
Yes.
We have a resolution in the book to approve this with GDOT, supplementing agreement for one for the reasons just stated. Anybody considering approving the motion?
So move.
We have a motion, District Four.
Second.
Second from District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to purchasing resolution requesting award of an annual contract for the fire protection equipment inspection and maintenance services for various county departments, Rod Gray. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The first item I have today is a request for an annual contract for the inspection and maintenance of the fire and protection equipment for various Henry County departments. The request involves using the U.S. Community's Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, and the recommendation would be to award this contract to Centos Corporation. This has been vetted by the Facilities Maintenance Department. The recommendation is for a one-year agreement with two mutually agreed-upon annual extensions. Prices will remain firm for the term of the contract.
Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, we have a resolution in the book, award contract pricing for fire protection system services. If somebody would consider moving in that direction, have a motion from District Three.
Second.
Second from District Two, any further discussion? All in favor, lifting your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution requesting award of the sale of unserviceable property at 240 Meadowbrook Drive.
Yes, sir. The Board in Resolution 13-288 on December 3, 2013, authorized the sale of county real property at 240 Meadowbrook Drive in McDonough, Georgia. We subsequently placed a bid opportunity, which was sealed bid 1421. We received one bid for the sale of the unserviceable property from James Maples of McDonough, Georgia, in the amount of $7,506. The recommendation is to award the sale of this unserviceable property to James Maples of McDonough, Georgia, in the amount of $7,506. And as a note, the Board also authorized the sale of another unserviceable tract located at Land Lot 83 on Turner Road. We did not receive any bids for that particular tract. So I, my anticipation would be closing that bid out.
We have a resolution in the book for sale of county real estate property, 240 Meadow Book Drive, McDonough, Georgia, sealed bid 14-21-SP, if somebody would consider moving in that direction. We have a motion, District One, second from District Three, any further discussion? The only discussion I would have, just for comments, we have a four, five-page of all the property that's owned in Henry County, and what this board is going to do over a period of time, this is lengthy, it's just like pulling teeth, but the property that we have deemed, it's, we don't have any use for it, we'd like to get rid of it and put it back in the tax base. Now, this is a lot in a subdivision, and unless somebody can enlighten us, I don't, I don't know how the county ended up with a fee simple lot in a subdivision. But we had another two-acre tract with a pond on it on Turner Road, I think it's, and it, the unfortunate thing is you can't, it's unbuildable, you can't build a house on it, so I'm sure that's why somebody didn't move in that. But this is kind of like a test case of how we're going to transpose, get rid of land that we, the county has no public use for, and try to get it back in the tax base. So having said that, anybody else have any comments or discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, lifting your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have a request for approval of an amendment of an ordinance regarding parked prohibited acts. Vincent Scott, the RISs Safety Manager. Mr. Scott.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members. I was just coming back to the Board with the table agenda item that was requesting the approval of the ordinance to amend the Henry County Code of Ordinances, Article One, Section 3-13-4, which stated parks prohibited acts. And at the Board of Commissioners meeting that was held back on May the 6th, I recommended that a comprehensive general liability insurance for the use of fireworks, explosives, or firecrackers be $4 million. The premise of my recommendation was based upon the use of fireworks, explosives, and firecrackers at a county-owned park, also the number of people expected to attend the event, the required use of county resources, that being said, an ambulance and a fire department brush truck, and the overall unforeseen events. It is my belief that the $4 million comprehensive general liability policy, along with the hold, harmless, and indemnification contract wording, protects the best interests of the citizens, Board members, and employees of Henry County. As requested at that Board meeting, I was to research other authorities, cities, and counties of the metro Atlanta area to learn what they require for the use of fireworks on government-owned property. In that, in the red folder item, I attached a table that I compiled with some of those same, with those same entities that was asked of me. I put it placed in Centennial Park, Gwinnett County, Fulton County, Cobb County, the City of Marietta, and also Clayton County. In conclusion, I am confident that my recommendation of $4 million is in line with the other governmental entities of the metro Atlanta area. I'm also certain that the recommended amount of comprehensive general liability insurance with a signed contract containing the proper hold, harmless, and indemnification language will adequately protect the citizens and the Board of Commissioners in the event of claim against Henry County.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Vincent, I was the one that asked you to go tell me what other communities were doing. Did you choose these Centennial, Gwinnett, Cobb County, is this because they all have fireworks displays? What was your, how did this list come to be? I mean, because I don't see like Fayette County, or Forsyth County, or Cherokee County, do they not do fireworks in those counties?
Yes, sir, but I chose the list based on what was stated at the meeting. I think Gwinnett, Cobb, and the City of Atlanta, with those were brought up, but I also, I also expanded a little bit further out, you know, with some of the others. I also saw that Clayton County had a fireworks event that they put on three times, three times a year. Some of the other counties that you just named, I did call to check to verify with those counties. I didn't get a response back, so I didn't place those on there. But the responses that I did get back, I also verified that with the, with the person that gave me that information.
So the other question I have for you, Vincent, is that, looking at this list, it looks like a lot of them are either $1 million or $2 million. The exception is Gwinnett County that has the $5 million general liability, doesn't talk about per occurrence. Is your recommendation still for, because I go back to, before you answer the question, I go back to my concern of what does this limit us to? I mean, because we want to, we want to protect the county, but also let everybody know, we're open for business, and we want events, we want quality-of-life things to come to the county. And what I've worried about when I talk to insurance professionals is, you can get coverage at $1 million very easily, because there's a lot of carriers that are willing to do $1 million. You can even get coverage at $2 million, but once you kind of exceed $2 million, you start, there's very few carriers that are in that marketplace, insurance carriers that provide three, four, five, six million, because it becomes specialized. It's not just generalized insurance, it's very specialized. And the prices go up substantially, because they say if you're asking for $4 to $5 million of coverage, there must be substantial more risk than these other communities are offering, and that thereby limits the number of events we can have in the community. So, because I take, staff is very important to me, and if you guys come to me and you tell me this is my recommendation based upon my expertise, my talents, my experience working in this field, I'm going to follow you, but I want to make sure that $4 million is really what you want, and it's not $2 million like a lot of these other communities and other things are doing. What's your recommendation? Is it $4 million?
Yes, sir. My recommendation is the $4 million, and with those other communities that you name, I also showed some things there on the side in which they had, such as an umbrella policy, in which many of those did use an umbrella policy to provide that extra added insurance in case of.
Umbrella's a lot different, though, than general liability insurance. It's a lot cheaper. I mean, I, dealing with personal insurance, you know, working in personal finance myself, umbrella coverage is cheap. You can get $5 million of umbrella coverage for hardly anything. But the threshold of what gets you that coverage on general liability versus umbrellas is a lot different. The underwriting's completely different, too. So, $4 million of general insurance is a lot different than you telling me you want $4 to $5 of umbrella coverage.
Yes, sir, it is a lot different, but umbrella coverage, that is a coverage that you can piggyback on to your already, your comprehensive general liability insurance. And that's, I think in years past, we've looked at it as a factor of, well, there's some insurance here, there's some insurance there, and they've tried to add them all up together. The umbrella policy is the only policy that you can add to your general liability insurance.
Well, I think this right here is limited, according to what it says here regarding the use of fireworks, explosives, or firecrackers. Okay, I don't think a normal business would be having firecrackers in their work as far as general liability, as far as a discussable item. So this is limited to that, the amendment. I just thought I'd throw that out. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Vincent, looking at your chart here. I'm looking at all these different rates here that you've got on insurance, and Gwinnett County requires a $5 million general liability. Can you tell me how many fireworks shows they have once a year?
Well, Gwinnett County, excuse me, due to the, due to the economy, they no longer put on a fireworks show.
So they're not even in the.
As far as, on county, on county property, they no longer put on a fireworks show.
Is that also because the insurance is so high that nobody wants to do fireworks in Gwinnett County anymore?
Well, he didn't, he didn't get into what the, what the request of that was, or what the.
Because that's, that's exactly what I'm worried about, Vincent. We put this insurance so high that it prices us out of the marketplace.
Well, that shouldn't be on this list. We're looking for comparables.
Right.
And based on the fact that they don't have fireworks, it's not a comparable, so we can just scratch Gwinnett right on off this list.
Yes, sir. I only put them on there because they were requested at the last meeting. It was requested.
Required $2 million?
Yes, sir, it was. The contract signed was that, $2 million.
And the promoter of this fireworks, 4th of July, he's responsible for the security and the fire protection, correct? I mean, for paying for it.
Yes, sir.
Why didn't you put Gwinnett County down? Because, I mean, if they don't do fireworks, then there was really no need to even add them to this list. So why would they be put on this list?
I only put them down because that was what was asked by Commissioner Preston in his table, when he, when he stated the table, the idea. That was the only reason.
I think, well, then, if you're going to list, if you're going to list a county that's not, you know, compatible with what we're looking to do, I mean, you should, you should, in the future, just add a caveat saying, hey, this county does not participate in such and such. So, just, you know, just, just so, so when we review these things and evaluate it, we're able to make apples-apple comparison.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Anybody? Yes, sir, District Four.
I've kind of skipped a little bit ahead of you. Apologize for that to start with, but in looking at the contract that may be proposed to this board, there's each occurrence of $2 million. There's $2 million personal injury, and there's $2 million general aggregate. Does that, in your mind, make up the $2 million, the $4 million, because it's two and two? And does it also, because it's listed, the limits at each occurrence? Does that, does that get to $4 million in your mind?
Well, with the aggregate, it doesn't actually get to a full $4 million, because it's capped off at that $2 million for each occurrence. So no more than that $2 million could a claim be paid out.
What about the personal injury side? Is that set at a maximum of two or each occurrence?
Now, on the personal injury for each occurrence, it is $2 million for each occurrence. It's just cap, that aggregate is giving it that cap of $2 million that they will pay out, no more than the $2 million for each occurrence. That aggregate is, is the cap of the occurrence.
Okay. Now, but the $2 million for personal injury would be each occurrence?
Yes, sir.
And it's really not capped at $2 million, is that right? I'm asking, I don't know the answer to this one, so.
Each occurrence is capped at the $2 million.
Okay. So if you had 10 people hurt, then you would have basically $20 million, just using easy numbers, right?
Yes, sir. You would have the $2 million plus the $2 million, because it's each occurrence.
All right. Thank you.
That aggregate is the cap of the occurrence.
Okay. But the two million dollars for personal injury would be each occurrence?
Yes, sir.
And it's really not capped at two million? Is that right? I'm asking. I don't know the answer to this one, so...
No, each occurrence is capped at the two million.
Okay. So, if you had ten people hurt, then you would have basically twenty million dollars just using easy numbers, right?
Yes, sir. You would have the two million plus the two million because it's each occurrence.
All right. Thank you. That's all.
Any other question? We have an ordinance in the book, ordinance to amend Section Three-Dash-Thirteen-Dash-Four, Parks Prohibited Acts Regarding the Use of Fireworks, Explosives, and Firecrackers at Gatherings Defined as Special Events to Be Held at Henry County Parks or any other recreational areas. Somebody want to move in a direction?
I'd just like to ask another point of clarity, another question.
Ask what?
Ask another question that kind of...
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bowman was asking, because I think that gets to a lot in the past. This has been stackable insurance, too, or that's how we've kind of figured it was four or five million dollars of coverage. Because each vendor who came in, like the jumpy's vendor, had their own million or two million. Then you had this vendor that had a million, two million, and so there was... And then, you know, you had the general in the background that had a million to two million, and you could stack it to get to the four million. This is requiring four million on the front end. Is that... I guess what the pause that you're seeing, Vincent, is that I think, and I'm just telling you my opinion, is that there is a... We're concerned that we're going to price ourselves out of a lot of quality-of-life events if we push this thing too high. And four million seems too high for me to keep the quality of life where I like it. And that's why I'm sitting here. I can't make a motion on something I don't feel comfortable with. If there was a lower number, two million, I would feel much more comfortable with that because I think it puts us well above our peers that are doing this. So, it protects the county, but it also probably keeps us from pricing everything out. But I need the staff to make recommendations. I'm not... It's not for us to change these numbers without staff telling us, hey, this is... Because I want to go through the chain of command properly. And I think that's why you're seeing pauses up here is because I think there's some concern about pricing us out.
Let me ask you a question. If Henry County sponsored this fireworks, how much insurance do we have? Would we have if Henry County sponsored it?
If this was a Henry County-sponsored event, it would be the four million dollars in general liability coverage.
Okay. If we didn't have fireworks and we had Henry County sponsor a quality-of-life event at one of our parks, what would be the coverage?
That coverage would still be a comprehensive general liability of four million dollars.
Okay, so, we're trying to establish that fireworks is a better quality of life and takes less protection than anything that Henry County provides quality-of-life stuff for their citizens. That's the point I'm making.
One point of question. My concern is the government, and this is the problem I think we'll run into on the federal as well as the state, government can't do everything for us. I mean, if we want quality of life, we need to let private vendors and citizens, give them a platform where they can come in and provide stuff for us, too. If we're going to just count on the government and our insurance, because truthfully, our coverage is pretty good. We've had the county attorney last time say that we make everybody sign a hold harmless clause in every one of our things. I just... Point of clarification is that I think that we have to be careful thinking that the government can do all of our quality-of-life things. Because as you see, we've really been struggling with the budget, trying to make sure we keep our police officers paid as well as they need to be paid, making sure that our other, you know, employees get everything they need. I don't want the citizens to walk away thinking, wow, okay, they're going to start dumping a lot of money and getting these fireworks. They're going to start dumping a lot of money, getting this and that. And I just don't think we can fund it. So, that's why I want to make sure we create a big enough, open opportunity for private vendors to come in and say, hey, we want to create this quality of life for you guys, too. And if we might need to use some of the government property, that's the people's property.
Didn't that one time the county put on this event?
Yes, sir.
Why did we just continue doing it?
Money.
Money. Absolutely. I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
The last time, we lost money on it.
Yes, sir.
Just another comment. We... I'm sorry. I yield the floor to District Four.
Well, I mean, it's pretty simple at the end of the day. If all businesses ran like county, state, or federal government, we'd all be broke anyway, so it wouldn't make any difference. Possibly, we have too much coverage when we got a kid playing in a park at the end of the day. So, I mean, you know, just because our government and our county elects to have for me, I look at it different when I see two million in aggregate, two million in injury, and then that is each occurrence on the injury. Now, having some family, they're in the legal profession. I know what the attorneys do. I mean, the attorneys look for limits of liability if they go after somebody. They generally try to go after that limit of liability. And if it's a four million dollar limit of liability, that's why the insurance companies withdraw from having an issue like that, not because there's a lot of two million dollar cases. It's going to take a lot to reach a two million dollar personal injury. That's where I'm having some heartburn over. So, I just wanted to be clear that we understand why I feel like that two million each occurrence, when you get into personal injury, and that's each occurrence that can go on. I mean, you know, if a catastrophe happens, it's pretty hard to breach two million in some... I mean, obviously, you can, but I haven't seen too much of it. And I know there's some people been killed by fireworks. But at the end of the day, at the amount of fireworks that have gone on and all the things that have happened, I mean, I'm not talking for myself. I've never been to one. Never been to the one at Nash Farm, never been to one. You know, I can watch them on TV. I've got my own private bathroom, and then I'm good. But at the end of the day, I just wanted to make that plain. It's still, it's very important that people understand it's two million dollars on aggregate as far as the one issue. But then it's two million dollars personal injury on each occurrence. And I don't want to see us price ourselves out of an area that, you know, we might could make some things happen in other arenas. So, anyway, having said that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Anybody have any comments?
The only other comment I would make, when the county sponsors an event at our park, the taxpayers are on the hook to pay the premium for the four million. Okay, now, if a private sector comes in, they do this to make money. And the way I look at this, if they're here to make money for profit, then we still got the... If they don't get the four million, the taxpayer is still on the hook for the premiums, for the coverage, and for a private sector to make money. I'm not against making money, but I don't think somebody ought to make money off the back of the taxpayers. And I think what's good for the county in one respect would be good for the county in another respect. That's just my thoughts. But anyway, we have an ordinance, unless anybody has any more comments to consider, in the book.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Is the general consensus of the board two million dollars?
Vincent, this is the problem, is that we want the staff to give us the recommendation of what's most prudent for the community. And we've told you our concerns. It's, I don't want you doing stuff because somebody's bending your ear or you think this is the feeling of the board. We want you to give us your recommendations based upon your expertise. And if you tell me now two million, I need you to tell me why two million's okay.
Well, I was only asking that because it seems like the general consensus of the board is two million based upon the fact that it's been two million in years past. And I don't know if it seems like I'm trying to change something from the two million that has been in years past. And that's just the question that I'm gazing here.
In your professional opinion, what would you recommend? Go to recommend it once, but recommend it again.
In my professional opinion, I recommend four million dollars of comprehensive general liability insurance.
Thank you. Anybody else? Comments? Seeing no comments, I'm going to suggest that it just goes away. Okay, thank you so much. Next, we have a resolution question approval of a facility rental agreement for the Fourth of July fireworks at Nash Farm. Tim Coley. Mr. Coley.
Yes, sir. Good morning. We had a request from the Henry County Rodeo Association to host a Fourth of July event on July fourth with rainout days July fifth and six to be held at Nash Farm. And what we're coming today for is asking for a resolution for approval for a fireworks show at the July fourth event.
Have a motion. Correction, have a resolution to book for the Henry County Board of Commissioners for the purpose of approving the use of fireworks for Fourth of July, Nash Farm. Somebody moving that direction?
Quick question. I notice the account, has everybody been settled up on the accounts and so forth?
Yes. Sorry, what?
I said, they're going to have two million dollars in coverage.
I'm assuming two million, since the other orders didn't change, I'm assuming it's still two million.
Yeah, I was looking at the...
If you ask me, it's four million, but nobody asked me.
I'm just here asking for permission.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve, move to...
We have a motion from District Two to approve, seconded by District Five. Any further discussion? Hold in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Let's move on.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Public Works Resolution Question, an award to bid Plant Mix Asphalt, Terry McNichols. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board Members. We bid out our annual contract for Plant Mix Asphalt. And we are recommending a little bit different award. I'll briefly kind of explain this just to make sure it's kind of clear. We had basically two vendors respond, E.R. Snail and C.W. Matthews. To start off with, we are recommending that we award the 4.75 mix to C.W. Matthews in general. And if you will, you'll notice in your packet, there's a map. And in both locations, we're going to talk about two zones. In both locations, we recommend that we use C.W. Matthews for the 4.75 millimeter mix, and that's county-wide. Beyond that, we are recommending kind of a split award. What I would say is to the eastern side of the county is E.R. Snail. In that location, we are awarding all the mixes to E.R. Snail other than the 4.75. Then on the bottom-left corner down there, the southwest corner, we are awarding all the mixes in that location to C.W. Matthews. And the reason we're doing that is because C.W. Matthews was lower than Snail, and they have a plant right there on 1941, so they're in close proximity to that area. And they're lower, so to us, it makes sense using those. And we created a boundary line, if you will, simply based on getting to the plant. The location of the plant, they were closer, they were lower, so we elected to use them. On the others, E.R. Snail was lower, reasonable distance to the plant, so we awarded those. Then as a general backup, anything where we awarded to Snail, just in case if they have a plant failure, or they're doing maintenance on it, or they're broke down, or whatever event may come up, we're asking to use C.W. Matthews as a backup. So, that's kind of the gist of this resolution. And I'll be happy to answer any questions or clarify that if I need to.
Anybody have any questions?
Chairman.
Yes, sir. District Two.
Terry, I just, because I know that we've had some conversations. I'm saying this really for the public's benefit because you know where my heart is as well as the other commissioners on. We've been kind of driving you crazy a little bit about some of this because this mix goes into a lot of projects that are sitting out there. And I kind of wanted to clarify for the taxpayer and the citizens that are watching this that... Because I know we've gotten quite a few emails that they're disappointed that some of the projects have been a little slower, you know, been held up by two to three weeks because this item, one of these items is going to be on here in May. But there was a problem with the item on the agenda. We came back and got it right. And the problem with government, and I'm just going to be straight up with you, is it's not a speedboat. I think in private sector, where I'm used to making decisions, if you make a decision, especially as a businessman, you can go tell somebody to go do it, and it happens because there's the procedures. Don't have three to five different authorities that you have to kind of go through to make sure that it's done correctly. And I think the reason it's set up that way, I know the reason it's set up that way is that government money coming from the taxpayers and the citizens, there's some fiduciary obligations because it's other people's money to make sure it goes through the right steps. I say all this because I don't want our citizens to think that our priority as commissioners is to get your projects done. It really, really is. And we sit there and pull our hair out, too. But at the end of the day, we've got to measure twice, cut once, so we don't have mistakes. Because we've had issues in the past where sometimes we've tried to cut a corner, and it's kind of, it's come back to hurt the county as well as I think it's hurt the trust of the citizens. So, I just wanted to apologize that we have been a little delayed because of some of the mixes and other things that we've had to get right, get the agenda items right. And then also ask you, Terry, and put you on the spot, have we been quiet or have we been driving you a little crazy with how we keep calling with checkups?
I probably should say when I came to the county eighteen years ago, I didn't have many gray hair. And now, I'm just trying to keep what's left from falling out. So, yes, obviously, y'all get a lot of citizen input. For those out there, they immediately transfer that input to me on a regular basis. And we try to respond as quickly as we possibly can. And it is, you know, we have been a little bit exasperated in the last couple of weeks, you know, trying to get some of these things done because we did make some promises to some citizens that we had every intention of fulfilling, and we still will do our best to do that. That certainly is our intent. Rocky is going to be presenting that resolution after me on the surface treatment. And this resolution that Rocky will present, actually, as soon as I sit back down, I'm going to do some texting if it passes. And so, I won't be out there playing. I'm going to actually be texting some of my workers, telling them where I need them to proceed immediately on some of these projects. This particular one on the asphalt, though, is a necessary item for us to, you know, complete our work in a timely manner. This is probably the most unusual award we've brought to you on Plant Mix Asphalt. But again, we're trying to be responsible with the taxpayers' money and award to plants that are cheaper, you know, when it makes sense to go to them. When it's closer and they're cheaper, you know, we feel like we need to use that plant. When the other plant's cheaper and closer, we use it. It just so happens that E.R. Snail, as you can see, it's not very clear on here, but that line is in this area for the viewing audience. And so, majority of this award, majority of this award will go to C.W. Matthews. There is some projects we'll be doing the next year that do fall in that southwest corner.
Let me... I'm sorry. I yield the floor.
No, I was just going to say, thank you for, as you tell, I'm jumping the gun here because I just want to make sure I had a chance to talk to you since you're the one I've been harassing. So, thank you for your help, Terry.
It don't take much to confuse me, especially if I'm chewing gum. But as I read this, I think the primary bid is going to be E.R. Snail.
That's correct.
Okay. In the event that they can't produce, they're down, they retrofit, whatever they do, if they're down, that's the only time we're going to buy from C.W. Matthews.
No, sir.
Okay. Go back to the map here. You indicated...
From C.W. Matthews, county-wide, there's one mix that I'll buy from C.W. Matthews regardless of where they're at. And that's the 4.75 millimeter.
Okay.
Regardless where they're at, I'll buy that from C.W.
Throughout the whole county, you will buy that exclusively, 4.75 from C.W. Matthews?
Correct.
Okay.
Other than that, the only time I'll buy from C.W. Matthews is if the project falls in this kind of what I'm going to call the southwest corner, and it's kind of shaded that light yellow-brown color. Not quite sure what you'd call that. So, any road that hits in that... So, any road that hits in, in that location, we would purchase the asphalt from CW Matthews, just in that one little region.
Where are they located? In Stockbridge as well? They, they have their plant in Stockbridge?
No, this plant from CW Matthews is actually located on 1941 in Griffin.
Okay.
Now, ER Snail's plant is in Stockbridge.
Okay, it says right here, the recommendation is to award 4.75 mm to the CW Matthews plant located in Stockbridge, Georgia.
It, it is, and we will buy from CW Matthews, countywide, we will buy the 4.75. All right? So, we'll buy that, if, if that job's in that area, we'll buy from Stockbridge. If the 4.75 job is in that southwest corner, we'll, we'll buy it from Matthews, but out a different plant.
I got you, they got two plants.
Actually, they turned in on the bid about four plants. They have one in Forest Park, and Stockbridge, Griffin, and one somewhere else I forgot about. But they're not reasonable for us to drive. We'll spend more time trucking the material in and out, so we didn't consider, the only two plants we considered of Matthews is the one in Stockbridge and the one in Griffin.
Okay, so where it is, it says the recommendation also includes a request to establish a secondary award to CW Matthews.
Yeah, that, the secondary award is if.
So, if, if ER Snail is closed down for maintenance or anything, then we, we will buy no matter where it is throughout the county from CW Matthews?
Yeah.
No matter what the project is.
If it's in the area that's shaded green, that's when we'll buy. If, if ER Snail is shut down, then the area shaded in green, you know, we'll buy from CW Matthews if we have a road in that location.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? If not, we have a resolution to the Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for the purchase of Plant Mix Asphalt, if any county departments, somebody move in that direction?
So, but, didn't warn the first time, I thought I'd try it again.
Okay. We have a motion from Distinguished General from District Four. Oh, we're moving on, we have a second from District One. Any further discussion? If not, vote in favor of the motion by the lifting of your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Oh, man. Resolution request and authorization to purchase a 2015 Ford F-250, Terry McNichols again, DOT.
Yes, sir. Henry County DOT is beginning to have an aging pickup truck fleet. There are funds available in salary savings in the DOT budget this year that will enable us to replace one of our crew cab trucks. The truck we would like to replace is a 1995 Ford F-350 Crew Cab, asset number 4810, with 284,698 miles, and that's when I wrote it, it probably has a few more now. Replacement truck can be bought on Georgia statewide contract at Allen Vigil Ford, Lincoln Government Sales. The replacement truck is a 2015 Ford F-250 Crew Cab, V8 long bed, four by two, three-quarter with options including LT 245 all-terrain tires, trailer brake controller, crew cab long bed, and a reverse aid sensor. The total price is $23,439, and this will require a budget transfer from DOT salary savings to capital equipment.
Anybody got any questions or comments? If not, we have a resolution to book purchase of one 2015 Ford F-250, long bed, crew cab, pickup truck, for the total of $23,439. Does somebody move in that direction?
So move.
We have, I'm gonna pick one, I'm gonna pick, the motion came from District One, second from District Three, they spoke in unison. Any further discussion? If not, hold in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you so much. Resolution request and authorization to purchase equipment for DOT. It's item 14, exhibit 14. Yes, sir.
Again, the DOT has received several calls regarding the need to mow grass in the right of way. I think it was a meeting about a month ago, a Commissioner in District Five even asked us to, to ramp up our operations a little bit. So, in lieu of that request, we are getting more and more calls as the county grows, and normal operation for us to, to mow was about four times a year, you know, if all went well. That, in a lot of locations, that's just not meeting, not satisfying our constituents in the county. So, with that, and with our aging equipment, we have searched and, and came up with a way of, of adding four new tractors. One of those will replace one tractor that had to be taken out of service last year, so it'll give us three additional tractors to put into our fleet. So, we're asking for four M9960 HFC Kubota, 99 horsepower, two-wheel-drive tractors with enclosed cabs at $37,859 each, and four Model 3810 Bush Hogs that are 10-foot mowers at $15,936.42 each, using the Georgia statewide contract from Lashley Tractor Sales in Lithonia, Georgia, for a total amount of $215,181.68. Again, this funding requires a budget transfer approval of 2,000, excuse me, $215,181.68 from DOT salary savings to capital equipment. Be happy to answer any, yes, sir.
We have a question from District.
That was quick.
Did we get any bids from any local vendors?
I'm sorry?
Did we get any bids from any local vendors?
No, sir, we did not put it out to bid. What we've done here is go to the government sales, and Rod may be able to help me with this, but instead of bidding it out, there's some things that we can buy on government contract sales that, where they've already, let me get him to, yeah, thank you. I'll let him explain that, he can do certainly better than that.
This is state contract purchase. There's a couple of valid reasons, well, there's always a valid reason to use it, because you, you're allowed to, not to be smug, but with this one, time is an issue. And with the funding source being in the 20, in the fiscal year 2014 budget, there's no way we could turn this bid in time to utilize his available funding. I completely appreciate what Terry's doing here, is trying to squeeze as much as he can out of a nickel. He wouldn't know this money's available until the end of the year. And so, we try to do everything we could to facilitate his needs in the short timeframe. So, I, I typically advocate for state contract purchasing anyway, because we have a staff of five, and it allows us to do a lot more things without asking you for more people. And so, this to me is by far the, the best way to go a, at this current time.
Best price.
We, yes, sir, and, and to be, like, we've had several successes with equipment purchases that we bid out with the local vendor, falling under the Henry County Initiative. The, the board passed, if they fall within 5%, they can match the low quote. It's worked, it's worked successfully with Campbell's a few times, but we just didn't have the time to make that move this time. So, it has worked, and we, we do have a local presence in this market, and they have been successful.
Okay, thanks. Yes, sir. District Four.
Does a statewide contract require you to use a certain vendor?
It, it does for most commodity purchases. There are certain services that give you a list of vendors that you can utilize, but like, if you wanna buy an F-250, right now, it's Allen Vigil Ford, period. That's your only option on an F-250. So, for most commodity purchases, yes, it is a specific vendor. But like, within Ford, it may be broken up between a few vendors, so you wouldn't, you can't just say all Fords are Allen Vigil. It's, it's commodity-based, it's on, it's on the individual commodity. The only, only time that you may see a whole group is if it's like a parts, like if we're buying, um, parts for IT equipment, it may be a whole catalog that's on the state contract. They're not gonna itemize it, 'cause it's thousands and thousands of parts, so they just go by catalog.
Thank you. I, I might add for a comment, back in the previous life, that was in the beginning, when the state would bid it out, and they went to the contract, and that was a, for small communities, that was great, because if we would bid out one car, they would bid out literally hundreds of thousands of cars.
Yes, sir.
The, the downside one time, we bought some Crown Vex, a state contract, and it was a company in Motry, Georgia, and we in Hampton. But the deal was, we got with, with the Ford rep, and it was interstate Ford at the time, and where Legacy is, and we'd take the car over to service it, and they wouldn't service it, but they worked that out. So, simply because you get it at a vendor doesn't necessarily mean that you have to go there, 'cause obviously.
No, sir.
If we had to go and service the car to Motry, we could pay a third more and buy locally. But the, the state contract is, is good, and there for the longest, to, to try to get competitive bids, we would let anybody, we would bid it out, and maybe one out of 100 times, somebody may bid it and, and beat it, but not many times.
We don't have the capacity to get as competitive quotes as, as you can, like you referenced, leveraging the state's capacity to our advantage.
Thank you so much. We have, anybody else have any questions? If not, we have a resolution to book purchase for M9960, correction, HFC Kubota, 99 horsepower, two-wheel-drive tractors, and four Model 3810 Bush Hogs, 10-foot mowers, for a total of $215,181.68, if somebody would move to consider that. We have a motion, District Five.
Second.
Second from District Three. Any further discussion? Hold in favor, lifting your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you so much. Thank you, Terry and Rod. Next, we have a resolution question approval of a change ordered from Atlanta Paving regarding Peaksville Road. Did I skip one?
It won't be heard. That item has been removed, it won't be heard today.
Okay. Under 13 Public Works, C will not be heard, I mean, D will not be heard, is that what we're saying?
D.
Since it's on the agenda, does somebody move it? We table that item for, just for legality, if it's not gonna be heard? We have a motion, District One, to table D. Second from District Two. Any further discussion? Hold in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Next, we have a resolution question award to bid purchases of a box cover system, Terry, and it would be number 16 on your book.
Yes, sir. The existing metal culverts beneath steel drive were failing and causing roadway to sink above the pipes. Pipes were extremely corroded and total disrepair. A two-cell precast nine-by-five concrete box covert system is recommended to replace the existing culverts. This new system will pass the 100-year rain event and have a service life of, service life of 50-plus years. Of course, Henry County DOT will be responsible for removing the existing culverts and installing the new precast covert system. This was sent out, we received bids on it, and we recommend award to Old Castle Precast, Stone Mountain, Georgia, in the total amount of $51,291.
Anybody got any comments or questions? Do you know when that covert was put in? That's in the, the, the upper end of a steel drive, is that correct?
Right, this, this is where steel drive kinda cuts across the, I guess that would be kind of the southeastern part of the lake.
It's down, it's down, uh, when you pass Nick's Drive.
That's right.
And before you turn off to David. Do you know the year that covert was put in there?
We put those culverts in when I first came to the county, so I'm guessing it was probably maybe 16 years ago.
When?
About 16 years ago.
I'm talking about the original ones that y'all.
Oh, not before that, I have no idea.
Yeah, I, I remember, I, I was in my youth when they first put the.
I think the lake was built in.
I just thought I'd throw it out. Anyway, we have a resolution to book for the Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for the purchase of, let me get to, let me see that. The box cover system.
So move.
We have a motion, District One.
Second.
And second from District Four. Any further discussion, comments? Hold in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Next, resolution question award of a bid for ready-mix Portland cement.
Yes, sir. Various county departments periodically have need for Portland cement concrete. A contract for this item will allow quick access to the product without the necessity of bidding each time that it's required. This annual contract guarantees the prices for each of the items will remain fixed. This was put out to bid, and we had one vendor respond, and we recommend award to Walker Concrete Company as a low bidder.
Anybody have any questions or comments, Terry? If not, we have a resolution to book, resolution of the Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for the purchase of ready-mix Portland cement, and it was based on the tabulation of the attached sheet, which is bid 14-41-SP. If somebody would consider moving in that direction?
So move.
We have a motion, District Three, to approval. Second from District One. Any further discussion? Hold in favor, lifting your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. That pretty well gets you through for today, right? Nah, just kidding. Resolution question award of a bid to purchasing reflective sheeting.
Department of Transportation requires various materials to construct roadway signs, street signs, directional signs, and other signs as, as needed in the county. Having a con, contract for these items allows quick access to the product without the necessity of bidding each time, and guarantees prices will remain firm for the contract period. This was sent out to bid, two, two bidders responded, and we recommend award to universal signs as the overall lowest and most responsive bidder.
Have you got the bid sheet in your package?
Yes, sir.
Would you be so kind as to display that, just for the public? They, they, they will know that, that this is the material needed to maintain all the signage on the roads.
Probably a little hard to read, but there's 33 different items on that list of different kinds of materials that we use, just in, this is not the aluminum blanks, this is just the different colors, sizes.
Basically, that 84,000 would be what we normally use for a year, is that correct?
I'm sorry, sir.
I said, the 84,000, would that, in order to establish how much it's costing, would that be for a year's supply?
Yes, sir, it would be. We usually base that off of amount of materials we would use in a year, package that up, and when we send it out, they would bid on approximately the, the amount of quantity that we used the previous year.
Got you.
And that's how they would base that bid. It's on a approximation of what we've used in the past.
In other words, we use a lot of this.
Yes, sir, we make a lot of signs.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions? If not, we have a resolution to book, Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for the purchase of reflective sheeting for the Henry County Department of Transportation. Somebody move in that direction?
So move.
We have a motion from District Three.
Second.
Second from District Two. Any further discussion? Hold in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Moving down to the Splas, a resolution question award of a bid for construction of the intersection improvement for SR 81 at Mount Bethel Road. Rocky Romero, Splas Transportation Director. Good morning, Rocky.
Good morning Chairman and Board Members. State Route 81 at Mount Bethel Road is a designated Splas III project, per resolution number 10-264. There is currently $338,587.10 available for construction for this project under the Splas III project. State Route 81 at Mount Bethel is also designated Splas IV project, per resolution number 1484. There is a million dollars budgeted for this project under the Splas IV, Priority One Project, calendar year 2014. Half a million in District One, and half a million in District Three. During the months of May, June, July, and August of 2014, the Splas IV collections of 250,000 per month will be set aside for the State Route 81 at Mount Bethel project. Seal bids were solicited for this construction of the intersection improvements. Six bids, seal bids were received on March 21st, 2014, and reviewed. Funding for this project is available on both Splas III and Splas IV projects.
Any question? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Splas staff recommends approval of the bid award for construction of the intersection to the low bidder, payment construction, in the amount of $1,338,587.10. to the low bidder, pavement construction, in the amount of one million, three-hundred thirty-eight thousand, five-hundred eighty-seven and ten cents.
Only have one question. I'm going to yield the floor to the- I'm just going to ask this. We can have one million dollars, half million dollars in two districts, District One, District Three. Splosh three has three-hundred thirty-eight dollars, five eighty-seven and ten cents. Now, the low bid was one million, three-hundred thirty-eight thousand, five eighty-seven. Is that coincidental?
The low bid was one million, three-hundred thirty-eight, five eighty-seven, ten cents.
And ten cents?
And ten cents.
Okay.
Correct. Now, under Splosh, under Splosh three, well, under Splosh four, we only have one million set aside. The bid came over a million dollars, so we need to have another funding source to compensate the difference between the one million Splosh four and the million, three-hundred thirty-eight, five eighty-seven. So the only place we could find the money is a Splosh three, which is, this project was designated on both three, four and actually was also on Splosh two. So it's a project that's been in the list for quite a few years. So if you look at the, it's hard to see, but this is on your package. Currently, currently on Splosh three, there was seven-hundred, seven-hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred dollars. Out of that, we paid for the design and the roadway and we're going to also pay for a portion of that construction as well as utility relocation, as you can see there. So leaving currently for the Splosh three, four-hundred seventy-eight, one eighty-five dollars under Splosh three. Out of that money, we're going to use three-hundred thirty-eight for the construction.
Okay. This is kind of misleading. It says Splosh three program, three-thirty-eight, five eighty-seven, ten. So that's not the remaining money. There's more monies in there.
It says for construction, available for construction.
Four hundred and some odd thousand.
Correct. There's additional money for, for the utilities and for program, construction administration.
Just looking at this, I kind of formed an opinion that how did the vendor know exactly to the penny, ten cents monies we had? But you said that's not the case. So anyway, I yield the floor to District Four.
Rocky, we're going to hit several areas. One, and I'm going to go back into just a little bit of history. The, when we were setting up our Splosh list, and I'm speaking mostly to our board, we, you know, we looked at every area that we could find alternate finance sources so that we could borrow money without having to pay interest for long periods of times and do things and still make it work. All right. Having, having several meetings, it really appears that those sources are actually not there. They're there for a little bit here and a little bit there, but they're not there for the magnitude in which we're going to need them. And I wanted to bring it up for the board, maybe for a little conversation while we're talking about this. Is it, you know, it's hard to bid a contract that's a million plus dollars on a pay-as-you-go when you're only getting a couple hundred thousand dollars per district, per month, whether it's two or three or whatever that number is. There's several things there that come into play. One is we see material, I'm in the business. I see material prices rising every day. So we're going to cut our nose off to spite our face should we go along and not go ahead and look at bonding. Because those amounts are going to continue to rise and the money that we may save in interest, we're going to spend in other costs. And I'm bringing it up for this particular issue because this is big, but I'm also bringing it up for a meeting that was facilitated by Dale Rutledge and by Rick Jeffries and your office, bringing DOT to your office in which District Three Commissioner myself met with to do East Lake and Georgia twenty. And in that meeting, I'm just, I'm just bringing forth the numbers. The roundabout was talked about and you, tell me if I'm wrong, but the numbers in the roundabout were from one point two to one point seven million dollars. We don't know because we've got to design it and then buy right away and other things. Well, that is a huge safety issue. And we don't need to try and wait for a year till we get one point seven million dollars in here to fix a deadly, because there's been deaths there, intersection at that particular route. So I'm proposing to the board that we take another look. And I know I may get hammered on this, but we can't find alternate financial services that we thought we could. And it's time for us to move forward on these issues that are public safety related, fire stations and other things. And, you know, I led the charge on trying to find alternate financing. I felt like there should be some out there. There's not. So at the end of the day, we've got to look into, we've got to look into these, the Districts One, Districts Three, District Four. We share that intersection. There's another intersection, Hiltfield Road and one thirty-eight that we've been talking about now for about four years. Well, we understood and you and I, I think you and I both understood, if we go back to the state and propose a roundabout there, if the site distances, and I've talked with Terry, they may very well work. If all of that works, we may be able to put a roundabout at that particular location, save money. We got two point something million dollars in it, not cost us quite that much money. We'll lose what engineering we've already done. But it seemed like to me, and you tell me if I'm wrong, that they were, that the DOT guys were putting their blessings. If we bring something that's got a roundabout, they're going to help us with it. Now, I wanted to bring all these things to light because at, at the end of the day, it doesn't help us if we save a half a million dollars and spend a million and a half in extra costs just because prices are going up. I'm in the commercial construction. I'm seeing it every day. I bid jobs in, actually in nine states. So I'm seeing it. I'm seeing those prices increase. I'm seeing the labor prices increase. And we probably need to get ahead of that curve. So having said that, I appreciate the time, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to be sure that, you know, in these items, when Rocky said May, June, July, August, you know, we're trying to collect this, this, this and that. It's not going to make much sense if we spend all that time doing that to try and save a little so that we spend more. Look at the concrete prices on what we just approved. A hundred and seventeen dollars a yard. I mean, I'm actually paying a little bit less than that on the project I'm doing right now. But I mean, that's what the county was quoted and they're quoting that because that's a year or so. You know, they're anticipating the increase. Anyway, having said that, I appreciate it, Mr. Chair, and I yield the floor.
I want to make another comment in regards to what the chairman was asking. And kind of going back to the prices are going up. Originally, our engineer estimate for this project, it was eight-hundred ninety-five thousand, three fourteen. So based on that, we knew, sorry about that, we knew when we were working on Splosh four that we needed additional funds for this intersection. Because as you can see, the original amount was only seven-hundred, seven-hundred fifty thousand. So knowing this engineer estimate, we put only one million on the Splosh four. Of course, the bid came over a million dollars and that's why we had to split the funding between Splosh four and three. So we were under a million. The project came at one point three. So going back where we mentioned in Commissioner Bowman, that's over four hundred thousand right there. So we may need to do more talking about another source other than this pay-as-you-go because you can see right there is four hundred thousand that if all the projects stay in the back burner and we don't do it them right away, it's going to cost more.
I meant, I mean, they are true. The, the cost of materials are rising. They're rising fast. But it's just not only the, the cost of materials, but the cost of money is also rising as well. So I think the faster we can, we can move forward, the better.
Just wanted to add that I was a little frustrated and disappointed that, because we were sold a bill of goods that these line of credits were going to be around there. And what happened to us is that we found out that in past Splos, and it took down a lot of bond money. And then if you looked at the timeline of how the money was spent, there's a lot of cash sitting in the bank that we had an arbitrage situation, a negative arbitrage situation. What I mean by that is, is that we're paying interest higher than we're taking in at the bank. And that's never good for the taxpayers because it's not a great use of resources. So I think what the board was trying to do and our finance people were trying to work with us and the banks, we found out they probably didn't realize the scope of how big some of our projects are when they talked about this line of credit with us. Is that what we're doing is I've heard us talk about now that there are some private placements and other things that we can do that would allow us not to repeat the mistakes of the past where I think anything we do that requires financing, we need to have specific projects and timelines tied to it so they correlate quite nicely. That you can go through a timeline, see that they could be paid back right as you're taking the money down. And I'm seeing that. I mean, I know our finance director has done a great job of really doing some great timeline spreadsheets. I can assure you, the public, that we'll be watching this heavy, heavy, heavy because your money's important to us. I mean, and we're not going to be physical mavericks that are out there just throwing money around left and right and wasting it on interest. But it is, Commissioner Bowman is correct that if you're only collecting, you know, a few hundred thousand a month and then you have a project that's going to be over a million dollars or even two million, three million. We even have some projects that are going to exceed five million dollars. It's hard to pay as you go. It's just like when you build your house. If the bank said, hey, you've got to come up with all hundred percent, most of us wouldn't be homeowners. And we're just trying to make sure that we're doing this as efficiently as possible. But I don't want the taxpayers to go, okay, here these guys go talking about borrowing money. We're using it as a tool. Debt is like a knife. A knife can be very dangerous, but it also be very effective. We're just trying to make sure we be as effective as possible. And we're not going to leave money on the table and have a reverse arbitrage situation like we had in the last Splos.
Anyone else have any comment? District One?
Rocky, in order to start this project, do we have to have a million dollars in the bank?
We currently have the three-hundred thirty-nine thousand on Splosh three. So this project is going to take around ten months to be built. So we'll have the money as, pay as you go in this case for this project.
At no time will we need a million dollars at one time.
No, sir. No, sir. Because like I said, it takes ten months to build it. So even if you divide that, you know, you're only looking at a fraction of that per month.
Collections are basically three, three hundred thousand a month for each district?
Yes.
And we're splitting the district with District Three, so we shouldn't have any problem in all paying.
No, sir. No, sir. And just, just to mention, we just got our first check.
Right. And I understand that it's up about a hundred and something thousand dollars.
It is, sir. Our first collection for the month of May, which was actually, we received it in May, but it's actually for the April collection, was two million, six eighty-six with eight hundred, eight hundred and six dollars. The county portion is going to be about two million, fifteen thousand, one oh five. That's about a hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred forty-four excess of what we predicted. So the first check that we received is over a hundred and seven of our predictions, which is, which is good. Hopefully, it keeps growing every month.
So that three-hundred thirty-eight thousand in Splosh three would give us a good jumpstart, correct?
Yes, sir.
I got one more question. I noticed, Latonya, on the sign-out sheet that you didn't approve it or didn't sign it.
I didn't, I didn't understand. I talked to Rocky about that this morning. I didn't understand the budget sheets that were on there when we were in our agenda review. Meaning, I expressed a lack of being able to clearly understand what was being done by staff. I think Rocky has answered some of those questions this morning in his presentation. He did a great job. But I still had some lingering questions, so that was the reason.
Okay, thank you.
Comment. I had the same question too. And back in one of my earlier days when I was interim, my personal director of Henry County, I would never present a, a package to the board for approval if the project wasn't incumbent at that time or unless they had a program for the board to look at as to how the payment was, how the total payment was going to be made. So you might enlighten us. You indicated we're going to pay this at three hundred?
Yes, it's a-
Would you, just for record, would you restate how we're going to pay for this?
Sure. Sure, Commissioner. Chairman. The way we're going to pay for this project, we have available three-hundred thirty-eight, nine thousand under Splosh three. Once we pay, once the contractor starts and he starts sending invoices every month, the first three-hundred thirty-eight, actually first three-hundred thirty-eight thousand, five-hundred eighty-seven dollars and ten cents, we're going to be paying that first out of Splosh three. So we're going to actually cut a PO for the, for just that amount towards pavement. Then we're also going to cut a PO for a million dollars out of Splosh four. So once we pay that entire three-thirty-eight, five eighty-seven, that's when we're going to start using Splosh four. So in the meantime, we have already received a check for May. So each commissioner has about two-hundred fifty. So already, already we have two-hundred fifty plus the three-hundred and thirty-eight. The next month, we'll collect another two-fifty for both districts. So that's going to be added to that project and so on for four months. But this project is, the duration of this project is for ten months. So we don't foresee, as pay-as-you-go, we don't foresee that we're going to be having to pay the contractor a million, three within the first four months. So it's going to take ten months.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments?
I'm just going to make another comment about this project too. This was a Splosh two project as well.
Correct.
And, and I was told it was actually on Splosh one, two. Is that correct?
I could not find it under the Splosh one list, but I did find that on the Splosh two.
Okay. Well, I'm good with it. And I, and I also agree with Commissioner Bowman. We got to look at ways to do some of these projects and get them done. That was a very productive meeting that we had with DOT.
Yes, sir.
It went smooth as a clock. DOT knows the concerns we have and they have some of the same concerns. And within the next two weeks, they're going to actually make twenty and East Lake a four-way stop.
That's correct.
And till we can get this roundabout started and up and going. But Commissioner Bowman and myself, we had a very productive meeting.
Any other question? District Four?
I mean, I mean, I understand and I appreciate the fact that these items that Commissioner One is, District One has brought up, they can be able to do. But, but take District Three and Four, we have other priority projects. And we can't do those priority projects and then put a million, two to a million, seven into that roundabout. I mean, so, yeah, you could in some, you know, in some respects, you can do it. But there's going to be some others. That, basically what happens in District One, that's the only project he's going to be able to do. He can't start another project because he's, he, his money coming in is just going to do that one project. So if he wants to do one other or something else, there's not going to be a money available to do it. But it's going to take how many months? Five, six months in order to get the money in just for the one project? Therein is where the issue is. When you've got multiple projects, I mean, I'd love to see us start the fire station. I would, I'd love to see us start the fire station in District Four. I'd love to see us do the sewer lines that we got on the countywide, on the north end of the county as well as the airport. The airport's very important to get those things done. And I understand, well, you know, pay as you go, but, and, and I was for that up until trying to get other funding sources. But these funding sources are not available. So I just want to be perfectly clear that while I appreciate this one list of things to be done, you can't bring another list until those things are done because you don't have any more money coming in. It's going to take every penny of what you got coming in just to do those. So if you got something else, you don't have no way to get it. So anyway, I appreciate that. I yield the floor.
Anybody else have any comment? If not, we have a resolution to book, Splosh Resolution to Approve a Bid Award for Construction of the Intersection Improvement, SR eighty-one at Mount Bethel Road. Does somebody move in that direction?
So move.
Have a motion District Four? Second, District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you so much. Now let's move to the resolution question approval of the use of an annual contract for Splosh four dirt road surface treatment projects.
Yes, sir. The following roads were approved to commence per resolution number fourteen dash seventy-nine for the surface treatment. And these are on District Two, I'm just going to mention them. Farmer Drive, Fields Drive, Floyd Road, Jones Road, South Mount Carmar Road. On District Three, we have Butler's Bridge Drive, Cannon Road, East Night Road, Esq. Road and North Bridges Road. Per resolution number 14-78, Milling was approved for surface treatment roads. The county has an annual contract for the following services: liquid asphalt emulsion per resolution number 14-76, for stone per resolution number 12-247, and for the use of dump trucks rentals per resolution number 1087. Henry County Department of Transportation will be performing this work for the SPOSS department and has provided an estimate material cost as shown on the attached exhibit. I know it's kind of hard to see for the public, but it's right there. Labor and equipment to perform the surface treatment work is included in Henry County Department of Transportation budget. Funding for dirt road surface treatment is budgeted in the respective project accounts of SPOSS four. Staff, SPOSS staff recommends approval of use existing annual contracts to perform the work needed to complete the 10 dirt road surface treatment projects listed in this resolution. With the board approval, Henry County Department of Transportation will perform the surface treatment work on the 10 dirt road projects listed for the SPOSS department and authorize the use of purchase of stone, liquid asphalt emulsion, and the rental of dump trucks for the amount shown in Exhibit A using the existing annual contracts.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, sir.
So Rocky, you heard me ask Terry the questions for clarification because
Yes, sir.
I know we have some citizens that are ready to get this stuff done so we can get these promises fulfilled that are over a decade old now on some of them. Is this the last step? Anything else that could hold this up after this vote today?
Hopefully it passes and there's no, this is the last step.
Except for God and weather?
Weather and, yes, yes, sir. Hopefully, hopefully we'll get good weather.
Okay. Okay. That's what I, I just wanted to get clarification so that we can get Terry texting or doing whatever he needs to do after we can get through this vote.
Any other comments? If not, we have a SPOSS Resolution to Approve the Use of Annual Contract for SPOSS four Dirt Road Surface Treatment Project. Does somebody move?
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second District three. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, lift your right hand. If opposed, same sign. So moved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have a resolution request approval of intergovernmental agreement with the City of McDonough regarding the Oak Park Restoration Project. Wade Stouth, good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. City McDonough has expressed their concern to Henry County Stormwater Department about Spring Creek. It is a live stream that leaves Big Springs Park and flows out into Walnut Creek in the county. Several years back, the county constructed the parking deck for the Judicial Center and did not build a stormwater management facility. And the city contends that because of that, we have contributed to the excess erosion in the channel. We looked at the drainage basin. It's a 174-acre drainage basin. The county owns 35 acres in this basin, or about 20%. Not only would this be a benefit to the affected citizens, but it'd also be a benefit to the watershed as a whole as it flows into Walnut Creek. Henry County Stormwater recommends doing a joint project with the City of McDonough under the terms in the intergovernmental agreement that you have in your packet. The county will be responsible for funding 34% of the construction cost. We anticipate, based off the construction plans that have already been done by City McDonough, that the project will cost approximately $225,000. That would bring the county's pro-rata share of 34% to $76,500 for the project. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on the histrionics or what happens moving forward with the project.
Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, this falls within the City of McDonough and District three. So if somebody would, we have a resolution in the book, Resolution of Henry County Board of Commissioners to Request Approval on an Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, with the City of McDonough for Oak Park Subdivision Stream Restoration Project, if somebody would consider.
Move to approve.
Have a motion from District three? Second District one. Any further discussion? Have a question from District four.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. I've got peripheral vision. I still got it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm just anticipating your call for a vote.
Yes, sir.
My apologies.
That's okay. I am multifunctional. Next, we have a Resolution Requesting Acceptance of a Contribution for Use of the County Property Located at 530 West Highway 2081 McDonough. The county manager will make that presentation. If you're not going to make it, I will. Did you not know you was on here?
Just a touchstone television?
Sir?
Which one is this?
Chairman, Commissioners, Touchstone Television Productions and ABC Studios are currently filming the television series Devious Maids and have located an unused property that's owned by the Henry County Board of Commissioners. That's the bank building located at 530 West Highway 2081. And they would like to use this location for the filming of a scene for the television show. They've made a contribution to Henry County in the amount of $5,000 for the use of this property. This is for a one-time use. A recommendation is made to accept the donation of the $5,000 for the use of the property owned by the Henry County Board of Commissioners.
Somebody move, accept the donation? Somebody move, we have a motion from District four to accept the donation. Have a second from District five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. What I'd like for the Commissioners to approve now is to amend the agenda. And let's add it 2021B. And it will be the Request Approval for an Emergency Repairs to a 2010 Dodge 4500 ambulance. This came up yesterday, and if somebody would move to amend the agenda to hear this item, we'll let the chief, Brad Johnson, do that. If somebody would move. We have a motion, District one, to amend the item to hear this. Have a second from District five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, County Clerk, for hearing this at such short notice. About three weeks ago, we had actually one of our ambulances causing damage to the box of that ambulance. In the last couple of days, it's been, I guess, adjusted through the insurance companies, through our risk managers, and approval to go ahead with the repairs. The repairs will be from Custom Works, which was the manufacturer of the ambulance, for $14,982.51. We'd like permission from the chairman to, and board, to go ahead with the approval to fix this ambulance, to get it back in service.
Have a motion in the book, Resolution for the Board of Commissioners Requesting Funding to Repair an Ambulance.
So moved.
Fella motion from District four?
Second.
Second District one. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, the approval of the minutes for August the 5th, 6th, 12th, 20th, and the 29th of 2013. If somebody would move, we approve those minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion, District four? Second District one. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Do we have anybody sign up for public comments? Do you want to be heard? I'm sorry. Joey, Joey, if you come to the podium, state your name and address for the records, please. You've got five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, my name is Joey Cahy. I live at 324 Jones Road in Hampton. I've lived on Jones Road for a long time, and I've lived in Hampton all of my life. I originally came here this morning with the intention of standing up here and complaining about my road being one of the dirt roads that was to be surface-treated with the project having sort of fallen off the radar, if you would, last week. Now, I don't want to get into all of the planning issues and so forth, and what didn't happen and what should have happened. I have absolutely no reservations about calling anybody that I need to when things don't happen as they're promised. And so I did do that last week. I reached out to the chairman, but to my district commissioner, Mr. Preston, to the county manager, Mr. Walker, and to Mr. McMichael in the DOT Department. I'm pleased to hear this morning that the county manager has informed me, along with the chairman, that progress has been made and that we're indeed moving forward, as we speak, I believe, to get this project that is very dear to us on Jones Road underway. So while I have no reservations calling anyone out when necessary, I also have no reservations about cheering your good work and letting you know that I appreciate that. So in that regard, I'll turn this into what was going to be a complaint. We can breathe a sigh of relief, I guess, now. And to tell you that I thank you for stepping up to the plate, for hearing me, for listening, and for taking action. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I bet you're wondering why we put that tractor right there yesterday. That was a joke. Next, we have the chairman. I have no comments. I'll start with District four. You have any comments?
No, sir.
District one?
I do.
Yes, sir.
The DOT just put a surface treatment on Laney Road just last week. And I wrote it, and it really looks nice. I've never seen it before, the new form of it. And I've already got emails from people thanking me. And I'd like to thank the DOT.
District three? District two?
I think I've talked enough today.
District five?
No comments.
No comments, okay. County manager, do you have any comments? County attorney, you have any comment?
Sir.
Upcoming meetings, Tuesday, June the 17th, 6:30 p.m., Rugby Board Meeting, Tuesday, July the 1st, at 9 o'clock a.m. And Tuesday, July the 15th, at 6:30 p.m. I would like to, I think we've talked about this and basically agreed that we're going to counsel the July 1st meeting for the week of the fourth. We sent emails out to that effect, and I think we got a concurrence. So I think it'd be appropriate if the board would move to counsel Tuesday, July the 1st, and that's a holiday week.
One point of discussion?
Yes.
I agree with the July 1st, but I wanted to give everybody heads up that I'm working to try to resolve something for July 15th. But there might be, but I don't, it doesn't impact anything. I just want to put staff on notice and as well as the other commissioners, there's a chance I might not be here on the July 15th. Just, there's no action required of it. It's just that it kind of flows into this.
Okay. We flow in and out. Does somebody move that we counsel you out first in observance of the independent estate? Fella motion, District four? Second District three. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. I understand we have executive session to discuss, one is acquisition of real estate. And I think we're going to discuss maybe some personnel issues? Say again?
Pending or threatened litigation.
Okay. That pretty well gets all three of them, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does somebody move to adjourn executive session in accordance with the provision of OCGA 50-14-3 and other applicable laws impertinent to the advice of county attorney for the purpose of, one, acquisition of real estate, two, pending or potential litigation, and, three, personnel matters? Does somebody move in that direction? So moved. Have a motion, District three? Second District one. Any further discussion? All in favor, going into executive session, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. We will exit into executive session, and we will be out in. We're all here. I need somebody to consider a motion to reconvene back into public session from executive session.
So moved.
Have a motion from District three?
Second.
Second from District four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Does somebody approve the affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session? Have a motion, District four, second from District one. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Would somebody move to amend the agenda to add two items? One would be a consideration of a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving the purchase of certain real property located at 1935 Panola Road and 16 Fairview Road, Henry County, Georgia, for public use. And also, an amendment, a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving a master agreement and recognition of non-disturbance agreements with Wells Fargo Bank for lease hangers at Henry County Airport, Executive Aircraft Storage LLC. Have a motion, District five, second District four. Any further discussion? Raise your right hand if you approve it, and same sign if you're not with it. Latonya Wiley will be the presenter.
Thank you, Chairman and Board members. The first item that I would ask for your consideration of is to acquire property that pertains to a SPOSS four capital project, actually, two projects. The property is located in two different physical addresses, 1935 Fairview Panola Road and 16 Fairview Road, both in Ellenwood, Georgia. And the item that's shown here is a aerial photo of the property, although there are two separate parcels of land. That is one contiguous piece for which I am asking your permission to acquire today. The property purchase price that has been negotiated, subject to your approval, for the 13.14 acres and the 6.46 acres total is $1,550,000. The property is actually owned by two separate corporate entities, GMB Properties and 16 Fairview Road LLC. The essential terms of the agreement consist of, aside from the $1.55 million purchase price, that the county will close within 180 days. The acquisition is contingent upon the county acquiring both parcels, and it will be subject to environmental studies being conducted, which will be subject to our review and acceptance. And if any remediation is needed, then the county will have the opportunity to deduct the remediation cost from the purchase price or back out of the deal altogether, if that's the case. There will be a $15,000 earnest money deposit that will be paid. And again, this is all SPOSS four funding. You have a resolution before you, and I'll ask for your approval.
Any questions?
This is District five, Commissioner. Thank you.
Projects is actually three?
Yes. It's a total of about 20 acres. And the first part of the project, of the property, is scheduled or slated to be utilized for a park. And the back half of the property or front half, wherever you're standing, will be either a public safety facility consisting of a police facility and a fire station in the Fairview area. Each of those items are listed as capital projects in SPOSS four.
Any other question, comment?
Yes, sir, District four.
This, and the, just to clarify the public safety, several, it's been several months ago, we had a situation where we thought that Stockbridge City was going to form their own police department. Therefore, we felt it was a need to have a police precinct as close in that proximity as we could. So just to clarify that one issue, that's all I have. And it is a SPOSS four project. Thank you very much. I yield the floor.
Anybody else have any comments? If not, we have a resolution before you, the Resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners Approving the Purchase of Certain Real Estate Property Located at 1935 1935 Panola Road and 16 Fairview Road, Henry County, Georgia, for Public Use. If somebody moves in that direction.
Some.
Have a motion from District Five.
I'll second it.
Second from District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Let's move now to the next item. The Resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners Approving a Master Agreement and Recognition of Non-Disturbance Agreement with Wells Fargo Bank for Lease Hangers at the Henry County Airport. The presenter will be our distinguished attorney, Latonya Wiley.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The Henry County Airport was acquired in August 19th of 2011. As part of that acquisition, there were in existence several leases for hangers and/or property, undeveloped property on the airport proper. Among those lease arrangements or hangers for which we have lease agreements that we assumed from Clayton County are two leases with Executive Aircraft Storage LLC. The combined rental fees for the leases that are shown on the exhibit here, everything in yellow highlights is Executive Aircraft Storage, and that property is under lease. The combined lease amounts for that property is $3,900 per month, approximately. Executive Aircraft is in arrears to the county in an amount of $114,000, the approximate amount. What we have determined is that they are in default under the terms of the lease, and Wells Fargo Bank, who also has loaned money to Executive Aircraft Storage LLC, based upon those leases, has asked the county if we would forbear in moving forward with moving, taking legal action under default in lieu of the bank stepping in, having a receiver appointed over the property, and paying the county 2/3 of the amount of the money due for the arrears, and paying the county the monthly rental fees on the current amounts due. And so what I'm asking for approval of today is, one, a master agreement with Wells Fargo Bank, as well as a non-disturbance agreement with Wells Fargo Bank, in order to allow the property to continue to be utilized, leased, and, more importantly, to get the county some resources for these leases that have currently not been paid. And I'll ask for your approval of the resolution and authorizing the Chairman to execute both of those agreements.
Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, you have a resolution before you. If somebody moves in that direction, send District Two.
I move to approve.
Have a motion, District Two, to approve. Second, District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Somebody move, we adjourn.
So move.
We have a motion, District Four, Second District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.